A reminder, the meeting is broadcast live via web streaming and shared on social media platforms. The recordings will be available on the NATO Parliamentary Assembly YouTube and/or Facebook channels after the meeting. The world has found itself in an unprecedented situation with the COVID-19 pandemic. As the president explained earlier, the Assembly reacted swiftly so we could come together and respond together, as allies and hand in hand with our partners. The crisis has touched all aspects of the life, from the lives of the ordinary people to the global economy. It also has produced profound effects on international security. Therefore, all five of the Assembly's committees and Mediterranean and Middle East special group decided to examine the pandemic and its impact in special reports. First drafts of these reports were discussed at the online committee meetings in July. We will now hear from the special reporters about their revised drafts. They will review responses to the current crisis and present recommendations to be better prepared for future crises. We will first hear from all the reporters. Afterwards, we will open the floor for questions and comments. We will not vote on the draft special reports. They will be adapted in the committee meetings over the next few days. With this, I would like to turn to the reporters. Let us start with Joel Greid-Mallem. Joel will tell us about the impact of the COVID-19 crisis from the perspective of the Committee on the civil dimension of security which she chairs. Joel, the floor is yours.
Madam Gariomadiam, if you could maybe ask for the floor. Very well, good afternoon, everyone. Madam Secretary General, hello again, dear Osman, good afternoon. So I'm going to talk about the special report we drafted at our commission. I'm going to talk about the impact of the crisis, the COVID-19 crisis on the civil dimension. Now, I'm honored to present this report to you today. In its first part, the report describes to what extent the Chinese, Russian, Iranian authorities' decision to curb fundamental freedoms have had on the development of this pandemic. In a globalized world, such shortcomings represent a threat for the security of the worldwide population. Furthermore, in a majority of countries, including alliance democracies, public authorities have had to take largely justified measures which limited some fundamental freedoms. It is key that these measures remain proportional, limited in time, and that they be implemented under the watchful eye of parliament and civil society in order to avoid declining fundamental freedoms in the long run. Now, in the second part of the report, it condemns the increasing disinformation and propaganda observed during the crisis, be it through mainstream media or social networks. This is done by non-state and state actors. Our report also outlines the efforts made by NATO to fight against these disinformation campaigns, and it also outlines the efforts made by non-state actors such as the media. In a third part of the report, it shows how the COVID-19 crisis has heightened pre-existing social challenges. The fight against the pandemic required the implementation of measures that restricted movements. These should not allow us to forget the positive impact of migration on our societies. Similarly, even though the pandemic is still ongoing, the emergency measures taken in the spring have to be adapted in order to better take into account the diversity of situations. And I'm thinking here, for example, about couples living in different countries who have to be able to see one another. Now, as far as the rights of women go, the measures taken worldwide in the fight against the COVID-19 crisis have heightened socio-economic inequalities between women and men and have led to increased violence towards women. It is therefore absolutely essential that gender be taken into account in our responses brought to this crisis. Children are also victims in this crisis. The pandemic kept millions of children from going to school. The crisis meant limited opportunities, which could in turn have negative repercussions on security in the long run. Last but not least, the report highlights the need to strengthen our society's resilience. This is really one of the main conclusions we draw from this crisis. We were not ready to deal with a threat such as a pandemic. This is why we have to really step up our efforts to make sure that our institutions, but also our societies, will be ready in the future to deal with such a crisis, whatever its nature. Dear colleagues, the current health crisis is exceptional, and so it forced governments worldwide to find exceptional measures. NATO and allies play a key role in all of this. That being said, we have noticed that coordination between national actions is too weak. As parliamentarians, we have to encourage coordination, and the Parliamentary Assembly for NATO is a great forum to do so. Now, the crisis isn't over, of course, but we already have to draw conclusions as far as the management and the consequences of this crisis goes at a national and international level. And I think it's important that NATO strengthens its existing partnerships whilst at the same time setting up new partnerships with countries that have developed resilience capabilities in areas where allies can still make progress. Let me give you an example, Taiwan. Taiwan wants to be part of the WHO, and I think we should maybe support them. In fact, I'm convinced of that, but we'll have to debate that. Coordination and cooperation are the best instruments to deal with the current crisis, but also the best way of preparing and developing resilience at a national level and as an alliance in the face of future crises. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Joel, for your presentation. Let us now hear from the Assembly President, who will tell us why NATO plays an essential role during the COVID-19 pandemic. Attila, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Osman. Dear colleagues, since the Defence and Security Committee discussed or COVID seems special report in July, I decided to change the title to NATO's Essential Role in the COVID-19 Pandemic. This new title, I guess, is more accurate. Accurate because NATO clearly demonstrated its capacity for effective crisis response during this pandemic. Early in the crisis, NATO SAKR coordinated allied institutions and resources to guarantee the rapid air transport of vital goods and services. Working together, allies met each other's needs by donating urgent medical supplies and personnel, heavy lift transport, repatriation assistance, and much more. To date, hundreds of critical missions have been executed by over half a million men and women in our allied armed forces. These efforts by allied armed forces to assist national health institutions helped mitigate the impact of the pandemic and saved countless lives. Allies demonstrated to the world that NATO remains strong, united, and purpose. To combat the second COVID wave, allies increased repositioned equipment stocks, established an emergency fund to assist with the purchase of emergency supplies, and activated NATO's vast scientific network to help find innovative solutions. These efforts also line up with new plans laid to incorporate pandemic response more thoroughly into strategic planning and exercising across the alliance various divisions and departments. Throughout the pandemic and contrary to initial concerns, allied forces have also demonstrated clear readiness to perform all their operations and missions, ensuring the ability to maintain a credible and strong defense and deterrence posture. Combined with the measures NATO allies have taken together since 2014 to adopt and reinforce collective defense, NATO stands more ready today to take on any new threats than just five years ago. I stress this because, as the report notes, the international security environment did not pose due to the pandemic. In fact, those countries rejecting the Western model used the opportunity to probe for soft spots to advance their interests. Russian and Chinese propaganda also worked overtime during the early months of the pandemic, targeting allies in particular. Moscow's aim was to paint our democracies as weak and incapable of responding to crises efficiently. China sought to shift global narratives, instead being viewed as the origin of the COVID-19 outbreak. Beijing sought to create the image of a benevolent actor facilitating effective crisis response across the globe. The sophistication of contemptible disinformation campaigns will likely only grow in the future, adding further complexity to the international security challenges we face. This report goes upon NATO allies to consider the following. First, to work together to protect the strength of our democratic systems as the most effective means to meet allied populations' needs. Second, to bolster self-sufficiency, not only individually but also among allies. Third, to find even more effective ways to counter increasingly widespread disinformation by NATO's strategic competitors. The fourth, to maintain their focus on the burden-sharing priority to keep defense investments on an upward trajectory. The fifth, to strengthen the breadth and depth of cooperation with the EU as it can be an essential partner not only in facilitating military mobility across Europe, but also as allies continue to hone the ways to counter increasingly widespread disinformation. And finally, the report also supports the NATO PAI's effort to ensure a strong role for parliaments in the NATO Secretary-General's effort to strengthen NATO's political role as part of the NATO 2030 Initiative. Democratic parliaments are key pillars of the international rules-based order NATO allies and partners wish to enhance. Thank you very much for your kind attention. Thank you, Osman.
Thank you, Attila, for your presentation. Now, our colleague Christian Tibrin, Special Reporter of Economics and Security Committee, will now address the economic consequences of the crisis. Christian, floor is yours.
So, yeah, Mr. Tibringiada, if you could request the floor, then we'll be able to bring you on screen. Yeah. Yeah, here we go, Mr. Chairman, he's coming up on screen.
Far away, yeah.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Hello, how are you? Christian, floor is yours. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Colleagues, my report and a resolution that I will present to the Economics and Security Committee explores the economic consequences of this pandemics. As you well know, the global community is undergoing the most consequential pandemic since the Spanish influenza in 1918-19. This virus has put a sudden stop to entire categories of human and economic activity. Earlier this year, OECD Secretary General told our members that while the global economy could manage a first wave of infections, the onset of a second wave would bring far more serious long-term economic challenges. That is where we are today. Pandemics are not only medical emergencies, they are also economic shocks. Under the conditions of pandemic, consumer investor behavior can radically shift, inducing dramatic contractions in output, investment, employment, and trade. Developing countries can undergo a precipitous withdrawal of investment capital as investors seek safe havens, usually in the most developed economies. Lockdown by time, lower pressure on healthcare facilities and workers, reduce infection rates. But they also undercut growth. Failing to generate a social consensus to properly combat the pandemic can increase the duration of the medical crisis and even unleash political unrest. State capacity should trust and effective leadership are thus critical to countering the impact of the pandemics. Those societies that do not take tough initial measures early will confront far more significant epidemiological and economic challenges down the road. These can have very negative political, societal, and strategic consequences. We face many longer-term economic challenges. Our governments have run large deficits to help citizens and business through the crisis. But we will soon have to unwind this large debt or find long-term means to finance them. The report there, I like that, yeah, okay, sorry. The report explores how specific sectors were initially struck by the pandemic. We know, for example, that the collapse in travel demand has hit the airline sector very hard. This has spilled over to airline manufacturers. The cancellations of commercial orders of firms working in both civilians' military markets quickly created cash flow problems in the defense sector. There are a concern that if defense contractors lay off workers now, they will confront difficulties reconstituting workers with the skill sets needed to develop innovative products for our militaries. Falling demand, lockdowns, collapsing trade, and a Russian-Saudi price war have also hit the energy sector this year. Energy-producing countries like Norway have had to manage this price shock. Norway will get through this crisis, but more vulnerable energy-producing countries face potential instability with important geopolitical implications. Russia will certainly confront more serious constraints at its budget, it's very dependent on energy exports. The report makes a strong plea for deeper international collaboration in the face of this grave challenge. No country can resolve either this medical or economic crisis on its own. We will need to do more to develop greater resilience to better react to future pandemics. We will need credible strategies aiming to unwind and finance debt burdens while intensifying monetary, fiscal, and trade cooperation. We should reduce overreliance on single supplier country or vital medical equipment, particularly when the investing countries is considered a strategic rival. We need smarter collective approaches to defense procurement and deeper defense industrial and doctoral operation so that we can get more return on our defense investments. We must rededicate ourselves to allocating 2% of GDP to defense and 20% of overall defense spending to major equipment procurement and defense research. This is the only way to ensure that allies remain capable of defending their societies against geopolitical threats, some of which pandemics will only exacerbate. Finally, I would like to make two small changes to the report text prior to adoption in an Economics and Security Committee on Saturday for the sake of accuracy. In paragraph 57, after the sentence that ends with "a phenomenon that can engender poor investment decision-making and undermine long-term growth", delete the rest of the paragraph and put in this sentence. "There has been substantial assistance provided to Americans struck by the crisis through the 2.2 trillion CARES Act, and a discussion is now underway in Washington to determine future support." This is an important update. Secondly, in paragraph 15, I would like to delete the rest of the paragraph after the sentence. "Just as trade growth has been a critical factor in wealth generation in the many years since the end of World War II, so too will the shutdown of trade become an agent of wealth destruction." The rest of the paragraph is not economically clear, and it would be best to delete it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Christian, for your presentation. Thank you. Now, as a chairperson of the political committee, Lord Campbell has examined the coronavirus crisis from a transatlantic security perspective. Lord Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Let me give you a warning. I'm in the House of Lords, speaking to you virtually, and an important vote is coming up very soon. So I may have to break off, but fortunately, we can do it on another instrument. So it shouldn't be much of what we call the winding up, the last speeches have begun. At the beginning of the outbreak, there were a lot of warnings that the pandemic would undermine globalization, that it would discredit international organizations and reinforce nationalism. And to some extent, that was proved true in March and in April. Not least, of course, some leaders started using the language of war. This was a battle, if you remember, and the United Nations Security Council was unable to produce a resolution on the pandemic. But NATO has emerged, in my view and in accordance with the terms of the report, in a quite remarkable way, and I would argue stronger, and indeed stronger too, are the relationships between NATO and the European Union. NATO demonstrated its usefulness and its agility, something we talk about in military terms. But in terms of relief, that proved to be invaluable. It's not a health emergency response organization, but it was pretty quick to realize that it had capabilities that could help other members. By May, allied forces had flown more than 350 flights to transport medical personnel and more than 1,000 tons of equipment to members of the alliance. In July, allies established a stockpile of medical items as well as a multimillion euro pandemic response trust fund. And additionally, cleverly using military to assist civilian, NATO allowed aircraft carrying medical supplies and personnel to use NATO call signs so as to accelerate air traffic control clearances. And as is noted in the report, there are many instances of help and partners on a bilateral basis. And of course, the remarkable thing is that NATO accomplished all of that while ensuring that the core function of the alliance, credible collective defense and deterrence, remained unaffected. And in parallel, the European Union was providing crucial assistance to its members and partners. And in fact, the EU has a 1.8 trillion euro assistance package, which will be indispensable in facilitating the post-COVID recovery. And NATO and EU cooperation increased very considerably during the pandemic, particularly, and this is a topic which has been referred to already, particularly in the area of countering disinformation, in which I think it's fair to say the EU has been somewhat more advanced than NATO. We've got to accept that in the post-COVID global security environment, I'm sorry, start again. In the post-COVID period, global security environment is likely to be characterized by increased geopolitical competition. That will certainly come in economic terms as countries strive to rebuild their economies. And it may also come in a competition for scarce resources. In those circumstances, I believe that it's vital that allied members of the alliance should retain adequate levels of funding for defense and security. And in this, NATO parliamentarians like ourselves have an essential role to play in this regard. Can I just make one quick point, which is perhaps not quite expressed so strongly in the report? And it's this, 2% of GDP in the last December is going to be very different from 2% of GDP this December. And we've got to be careful to ensure that so far as possible, we encourage countries to maintain 2% by December standards in real terms. Otherwise, the helpful and thoroughly attractive to the United States progress in European increases in defense may be thwarted. And I think a general lesson is this, as the report acknowledges, we have to adopt a kind of whole-of-society approach to security and to promote resilience so that when the unexpected happens, we're capable of responding. And in that regard, I don't think there can be any return to business as usual with China. And we must redouble our efforts to diversify supply chains in strategic areas. And one last point, which I think, again, not enough has been made of so far in the global debate. The fact of the virus can provide a momentum to strengthen the Biological Weapons Convention by finally endowing it with a verification mechanism. But the message is, the transatlantic relationship, it'd be wrong to say prospered, but the transatlantic relationship was capable of answering all of the challenges to which it was subjected.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Lord Campbell. Now, next is Kevin Jones, Chairperson of Science and Technology Committee, who will stress the importance of our scientists and engineers in overcoming this crisis. And the next now scientists are working on the issues. So floor is yours, Kevin.
So, Miss, yep, it's coming on screen now.
Hi Osman.
Hi.
Can I also?
Welcome.
Can I also say thank you to the staff for organizing this virtual conference? It must have been a very difficult event, but I think it's worth, even though we can't meet in person, being able to exchange you. So a big thank you to all the staff, all the hard work. The special COVID-19 report in the Science and Technology Committee focuses on NATO and allies militaries' science technology contribution to mitigating the effects of the pandemic. Science and technology, particularly emerging disruptive technologies, are of crucial importance to fighting the coronavirus. They will also be important in tackling future pandemics. Tools such as robotics, biotechnology, big data, advanced analytics and artificial intelligence are already being used in terms of this current pandemic, but will become important in terms of dealing with future pandemics in our response, but also to prevent them as well. There's also a very important point in terms of information sharing and information sharing and knowledge tools, both by private organizations but as well as international organizations such as the WHO's chatbot showcase the central importance of information technology during a crisis. The technologies offer a new approach in terms of being able to tackle the pandemic and obviously help information be shared amongst our community. Data driven technologies may also even be helpful in not only analyzing pandemic as it goes on, but predicting future pandemics. And some work has already undertaken by Harvard University in terms of looking at outbreaks, not once they've occurred, but seeing whether we can predict them before they occur. However, importantly, role of technology is important in overcoming the pandemic. We've also got to recognize that as we develop new technology, that there will be ethical, legal and policy decisions that are going to be generated around the advancement of these new technologies. So although they may help in terms of our fight against the pandemic and future pandemics by reducing costs, it's also important that those legal, ethical and policy issues are thought of as well, mainly to prevent misuse of technologies. And we've already seen some examples in terms of information during this pandemic, how information can be used as a weapon and also to develop a way in which we can ensure that the public are informed. These are important, I think, roles, not just for NATO, but I think for individual parliaments to discuss. Osman, can I now turn to what NATO is doing in the science technology field to tackle the COVID-19 pandemic? As you know, NATO's scientific and technological network is world's largest collaboration research forum in the field of both defense and security. This network helps to speed the process of generating resilience and make it more effective. And NATO has launched several initiatives to support international efforts to tackle the COVID-19 pandemic. The NATO chief scientist has launched the NATO Chief Scientist Challenge, calling on NATO's extensive S and T network to share solutions in virus detection, improve situational awareness, decontamination, resilience and looking at the post-COVID-19 future. NATO's scientific and technology organization supports the COVID-19 response through a classified collaborative platform where scientists from allied and partner nations can share contributions to their responses to the crisis. The NATO Collaborative Support Office has coordinated relevant research, including virtual reality scenarios for emergency medical care, reducing the lifespan of viruses by treating surfaces and fabrics with polymer coatings, laser testing and saliva examples, samples, sorry. So in terms of the NATO S and T network, NATO bodies are complementing national efforts by nations to tackle the virus. The draft report also includes several recommendations to increase the capacity of NATO's S and T. And it must be important ones that are about strengthening resilience for future pandemics and also to seek to expand its existing S and T network to strengthen cooperation with other organizations, particularly the European Union. NATO should develop a dialogue with international organizations on resilience, S and T and civil emergency planning. I'm optimistic that we will see progress in these areas and remind you that defense ministers have agreed that the recent ministerial meeting to strengthen resilience pledge was won NATO leaders when they meet later this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin, for your presentation. Now, with this, we can now turn to the questions and comments concerning special reports COVID-19. So our secretary general will help me identify requests and manage this discussion. So I see four requests, so I will take them all in a row. So now, the lady, we start with a lady from Greece, Tizaki, because she was in. So let's start with her. So ladies first. Floor is yours, Ms. Tsitsanaki.
Sashkharistou poli, kiri Osman. Thank you very much, Mr. Osman. I would like to say a couple of words and then I will ask some questions. I think that the most proper person to answer is most probably Mr. Christian, who talked about the financial impact of the crisis. So I think that democratic systems can come out of this COVID-19 crisis more powerful, but all governments have to try on a scientific basis and we also want solidarity and communication. Parliamentarians in all parliaments in the NATO states have to play a crucial role. So this is why we have to talk about defense expenditure in member states. Since there are extreme, there is extreme pressure on the budgets, do we still have this 2% of the GDP? Is it a crucial reference point? Or maybe we have to look for new ways of burden sharing? And how can we award countries that still stick to their obligations? For example, some countries, instead of reducing their expenditure in their budgets, try not to do so. But it's very difficult to stick to this commitment of going beyond 2% of the GDP as regards defense spending. Only seven member states in 2017 went beyond 2%. 3.42, the US, and then Greece, 2.24%. The other five countries above 2% were Estonia, UK, Romania, Poland and Latvia. Turkey, 1.89%, marginally below target. Of course, I have heard the views of Lord Campbell, who was in favor of an increase in the absolute number because of this decrease of the GDP, because of the financial crisis, the recession, the world recession in all member states. So I explained why I have a different view, an opposing view. So I would like to have an answer. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think your microphone is off, so we don't hear you.
Yes, now our colleague from Georgia, Irakli, floor is yours, Irakli.
First of all, I would like to use this opportunity and thank all international observers who, despite pandemic challenges, participate in the Georgia's parliamentary elections. Especially, I would like to thank NATO PA delegation headed by Mr. Osman Bax. Thank you, Osman.
Thank you, Irakli.
Thank you. With regard to first report by Joelle, Madame Joelle, I would like to thank Madame Reparteur for her excellent work put in the report. The global pandemic that we are facing now requires from many of us to rethink our economic and security strategies. There will much more silent policies. We address various issues of human security and increased threat from countries which try to explore the current pandemic for their own narrow interests. Therefore, we would like to propose to include in the paragraph thirty-three, afterwards, sort of set here, the following. On 7th April 2020, the spokesperson of the Russian Foreign Minister officially assessed Georgia of development and modification of various pathogens of dangerous diseases, including for military purpose. Furthermore, number of fake news were disseminated on COVID-19, such as misleading medical tips, conspiracy theories related to virus being a biological weapon of NATO against Russia or its speed alleged boosted by 5G network. And the second proposed amendment is correction of the cited sources in the report. In the same paragraph thirty-three, please replace words, the National Center for Diseases Control and Public Health with the following, the Richard Lugar Center for Public Health Research of the National Center of Diseases Control and Public Health, because the author of the article talks about the Richard Lugar Center and not about the National Center for Diseases Control and Public Health. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Irakli, for your comments. And they will listen. Now I turn to our colleague from Azerbaijan, Ziyafat Azkarov. Floor is yours.
Mr. Azkarov, we cannot hear you unfortunately. Let's try again.
Control the microphone, yeah. Mr. Azkarov, we cannot hear you. Open the microphone. So.
Or if you have a headset, maybe if you try to plug in a headset in the computer, maybe that would work.
No.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yes.
It's interpretive for. Yes.
Teşhərçürləydim, hürmetli hamçarlar, hürmetli sərdər.
Thank you very much, dear colleagues.
Bir sualı olacaq, ama suala keçmezden əvber, bir niçə məsələni nezercə çatdırmak istirəm.
I will have one question, but before going there, I would like to bring to your attention one issue.
Size meəlumat verma istirəmçi, bu yıl may ayının dördünde qoşulma məhərəkatı üzvilerinin bir zirvə toplanısı oldu.
I would like to bring to your attention that this year on May 4, there was a summit of the non-aligned movement countries.
Və bu qoşulma məhərəkatın 120 dövlət üzvüdür.
And there are 120 members of the non-aligned movement.
Və həmin hərəkatı sədirləyi halhazırda Azerbajan eliyir.
And currently Azerbaijan has the presidency in the organization.
Və o summitda, o zirvə görüşünde, Azerbajan Prezidenti Canab Ilham Aliyev birə bir təşkilifilərli sürdüşü Billaşmış Millətlər Təşkilatının başasambriliyasında COVID-19la mübarizi həsr olunmuş bir xususi sessiyə keçirirsün.
And the president of the Republic of Azerbaijan, Mr. Ilham Aliyev, proposed to have a special session of the United Nations dedicated to the COVID-19.
Və meəlumat verim sizəçi, bu yıl dekabrın üçsi üçündə Billaşmış Millətlər Təşkilatı başasambriliyasının dekabrın üçündə üçündə xususi sessiyası olacak bu məsələninən bağlı. COVID-19 həsr olunmuş məsələninən bağlı.
And I would like to inform you that Assembly General of the United Nations will have, will help hold a special session dedicated to COVID-19 on 2, 3 December of this year, 2020.
Çok şadam ki, nəhiyyət Billaşmış Millətlər Təşkilatı bu məsələ yer yaxşı virdi.
And I am very delighted and happy that finally United Nations has reacted on the issue of COVID-19 pandemic.
Menin sualım Canab Prezidentə, demək atırlam istiraz edə. Canab Prezident, siz bu COVID-19a qarşı mübarizə məsələsinde Billaşmış Millətlər Təşkilatıla nəcə aməhtəşrəgələyirsiniz?
My question is for the President, Mr. Attila. So how you are having the cooperation with the United Nations in the context of COVID-19 pandemic?
Və bir de belə bir sual verma istirəmçi, biz ne vaqta qedar online görüşlər keçirəci? Yani demə istirəmçi, bu COVID-19la mübarizənin mübariziə qalip, mübarizada bu xəstəliyyə qalip kelmenin kalacaq perspektivini nəcə görürsüz?
Also, the continuation as a follow up. What do you think? How long we will have the online format for our meetings? Or in other words, how long do you think the COVID-19 will make us to stay in this regime and continue our meetings in online format? What do you think about the?
Xəstəliyyə qalıb kelmenin perspektivini nəcə görürsüz?
The perspectives for winning the COVID-19.
Teşhərçürləydim, sağ olun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziyafat Azkarov, for your comments. Now, I will turn to Mr. Ahmet Yıldız from Turkey. Floor is yours, Mr. Ahmet Yıldız.
Thank you, Zeyru. I think Mr. Campbell, Lord Campbell, return to domestic politics, domestic voting. As you know, in recent meetings, we had agreed to reflect the contributions of allies in fighting COVID truly to counter Chinese propaganda, at least partially. In this line, in line with this, we had sent two small amendments updating the Turkish contributions within the alliance and outside alliance. Mr. Campbell is not here. I would appreciate if the secretary could check whether they arrived and insert it. For the information of the audit body, I will read quickly. In the page eight, paragraph nineteen, article nineteen, the vast sentence says, overall, Turkey provided assistance to 50 "Overall, Turkey provided assistance to 55 countries, of which are NATO member states." That the updated text, based on the info data, "Overall, Turkey donated medical equipment on foot to 128 countries, of which 25 are NATO members." Update of the figures only. The second amendment is on article 30, on the same page. On the third sentence, fourth sentence, it says: "Furthermore, Turkey supplied some 75,000 masks and retro of other health equipment such as oxygen regulators to Afghanistan." The amendment reads as follows: "Furthermore, Turkey supplied some 180,000 masks and retro of health and laboratory equipment such as oxygen regulators in addition to plenty of PPEs, IG equipment, medication and food packages to Afghanistan." These are all updates on numbers. Mr. Chairman, dear colleagues, unfortunately, the cases are at rise, rising rapidly in many countries. It seems the hope is with the vaccine. Vaccine development and vaccination of population. Let's hope the vaccines will work and developed countries, rich countries, will be generous enough to finance vaccine costs for poorer countries to curtail at the first instance this rise and to make a downturn in the numbers of cases and eradicate the COVID totally. I hope rapporteurs reflected this somehow in their reports, but you should be more clear about this. Thirdly, Greek colleague touched a very important issue, burden sharing. As you know, I am the rapporteur of the Transatlantic Committee on Transatlantic Relations. I will present my report, my role on Gulf, Gulf. And I think I will propose the next report about the burden sharing during the COVID and post-COVID era on the alliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ahmet Yıldız. Now requested floor by, I will, Evans. I think Evans, then Mylum will answer later on. So Evans, his floor is yours, the colleague from, yes, Chairman.
Okay, are you hearing me?
Yes, Evans, floor is yours.
First of all, as the Chairman of Economic and Security Committee, I would like to say thank you very much for Christian for preparing this report and also our NATO PA staff also. But it was a report on the 2nd of July. After September began a second wave of the COVID and how quickly we react also. Maybe not so quickly, but it's, the second wave is difficult, different like face to fall. But we're lawmakers and from us is depending how quickly we will be adapt some law or some changing in the law. Because from us is depending how the business it will be stopped or it will be continue. Because in the whole European Union, the world, there's tourism also stopped and many countries from 7 to 7, from 5 to 7%, they get money from the tourism. And some people also cannot stay alone at home. For example, children also, they have studied in the school in distance. And Latvia was one of the first country, maybe in European Union, maybe the world, when the children began to study. But at the same time, we thinking just it's not the best way. Better to visit the school each day, connect with the teacher. And the same for parliamentary, we're also working from the IPL in distance. But Latvia still continue, keep the 2% of the budget for GDP and for the, our plan for the budget in 2021, we also have the plan to continue this 2% because the, our programs, what we began few years ago, need to continue these programs. And soldiers also need to be sure just they will be get solar on time and the military equipment changing also. It will be, it's not, cannot change for the few years. But also, we still have in the pandemic time and many countries are preparing now the vaccine for the COVID. It will work and looking, working successful, but I don't try myself. And I think you also, but we need to work in this. And I have the questions for all the rapporteur. But how countries, especially maybe NATO countries, can cooperate in distributing vaccines? Because this is very important. It will be continue a long time now. Thank you very much for the old people who work with this different report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Evans. Now, I would like to announce that today is birthday of Evans. He is 60, he's, you know, as a champion, Olympic champion. He has three medals in Olympics, so I congratulate him. Long live.
Thank you very much, Osman.
My friends.
And also today Latvia celebrated the independent days, 100 state.
They celebrate too, yeah, okay, thank you, Evans. Now, Joelle is on, now I give the floor to her. Then she will answer our colleague from Georgia. Put some points about her report, so Joelle, floor is yours.
Oui, merci. Yes, thank you very much indeed. I wanted to answer Iraqli's proposals for amendments. They seem to me to be fully acceptable. Now, with a view to sticking to the rules of democracy and consensus, I will put those amendments forward in our committee meeting, but I have no doubt that they shall be adopted. Similarly, there might be some additional information maybe to put into the report on disinformation, on fake news, because I believe it is a very, very important topic. This morning, I was introducing in the Foreign Affairs Committee of the French Senate my report on our media, the media dealing with foreign affairs. France 24 is an international French news channel. And they told us that they recorded 300,000 attempt at inserting fake news per month. It's an enormous figure. It is an enormous problem. And we will look into that within our committee in 2021. I just wanted to mention that in passing. And of course, Iraqli's amendments will be introduced and I don't see why they would not be integrated in our report. Thank you very much.
Other question to Christian by our Greek colleague. Is Christian coming in?
Yeah, we have his request.
Question to Atilla. Yeah, Christian, floor is yours, floor is yours.
Thank you.
You have a question by our Greek colleague, yeah.
Yes, it was from the Greek lady, right, Tia Dora? Is that right? Yeah, that's right. Yeah, thank you for a very good question. So we, right now, we don't know how long this pandemic is gonna last, so it's very difficult to answer those questions before we actually know the consequences in the long term. And the economic recovery will be difficult, but the longer it lasts, the more difficult it will be. And I think the challenge for the different countries depends on how dependent you are on few industries. If you are very dependent on a few industries, of course, and they are actually being hurt by the pandemics, then it was very difficult to recover. On the other hand, if you have many different industries and some of them exports are working well, then it's not that tough. And also, if you have very self-reliance within your own country, they produce the most for, in your own country, don't have much exports, is also a better way to recover, then it's just a financial issue. So I, I think it's too early to talk about the 2% right now. And I also think it's also a question for the NAC to deal with that and not for us to talk different about this issue. But I see the, my UK colleague talking about the consequences over GDP and of course the lower budgets and the consequences for defence industry. I understand that, but the same is, the same issue, you find all the sectors gonna argue exactly the same way. So I think it's, is it difficult to have the defence, to have a, let's say, a unique position in this, at least in my country, it's gonna be tough to do that. So, but again, I said, thank you for a very good question. And we need to have solidarity within the alliance. And that's my advice to the NAC and to my Defence Minister and Foreign Affairs Minister. So, yeah, I think, I hope I answered most of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Now, is, there's a question for Atilla. Is Atilla coming in, our president, Roxandra?
Yep, he's coming on screen right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, floor is yours, Atilla.
Thank you very much, Osman. Yeah, Ziyafat asked a question. One is a quite difficult one, because he asked me to project something and it's, or estimate something, which is very difficult if it's about the future. But first of all, yeah, we had, NATO had a cooperation with the United Nations. We have Euroatlantic Disaster Relief Coordination Centre. This centre is coordinating among the, you know, the requests and partners and allies, what they need and how they can manage logistically these requests. And this centre had a coordination work or a cooperation with the United Nations Office of Humanitarian Affairs, mainly in Afghanistan and Iraq, where the NATO forces are deployed. So, yeah, we had a cooperation, some with the United Nations and some more with, for example, the EU and other member states regarding this humanitarian affairs. The second question, which is really important, that when this new situation will end, so when we can say that the pandemic is ended in a way, I would say that there won't be an ending regarding this pandemic. We believe strongly that the next year could be different, more normal, if I can say so. So we are planning that, for example, the spring session in Stockholm, in Sweden, could be organized. We have some doubts, to be honest, but still I believe that there's a chance for that. And if we have the vaccine, and you may know that in Europe and in the United States and even in Russia, we have quite interesting and probably efficient vaccines against the virus. And I hope that the next year, they can start to vaccinate their population step by step, of course, but it takes time. So to be honest, I think there will be a change perhaps around the July or the summer time of the next year. And perhaps the end of the next year, we have these kind of estimations from experts and colleagues that perhaps the next year, the ending of the next year or the second half of the next year could be similar than before the pandemic. But to be honest, I think this virus changed the life of the people forever. So I think we have to keep in mind that these kind of situations could happen whenever in the future. So that's why we have a lot of reports where we write down for NATO that they should keep in mind that this kind of pandemic situation could happen in the future with some other viruses. So NATO should be able to somehow cope with these challenges. And I think now we are much more well-prepared than we were before, I don't know, five years ago, or something like that. So I'm very optimistic regarding the new vaccines, these innovations and new developments. But I think it takes time still, of course, and to have the vaccine and to vaccinate the people. So these are, these are the, mainly the timeframe what we can see now. And we hope very much that in Sweden, we can organize the spring session. You know that Sweden had a different approach regarding the virus because they tried to aim the herd immunity, so they don't have that kind of strict rules than we have here, for example, in other member countries in Europe. So that's a little bit different. And of course, we have to keep in mind that they had a different strategy managing the COVID-19 crisis, the pandemic. So that's perhaps an additional information. Thank you very much, Osman.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Atilla, for your comments. Now, I see one colleague from Ukraine, Yegor Chermier. Floor is yours.
Hello, colleagues. Hello.
Hello.
It's Sir Osman, Roxandra, distinguished colleagues. Unfortunately, the spring session when we had to meet was canceled and because of COVID-19. But I hope that in 2022, you will join us in Kiev and we will actually provide session in Kiev. Ukraine, as well as we can see NATO's main interest in the current pandemic as well as in the future pandemics, is maintaining the health, safety and readiness of their armed forces. Although the pandemic does not pose a direct military threat to member nations, the widespread ramifications has shown weaknesses in aliens resilience and we understand that this pandemic also has self-implication for defence and security. According to the principle of resilience ensured in Article 3 of the Washington Treaty, NATO militaries are making meaningful contributions to support national civilian efforts aimed at mitigating the forces of the COVID-19 pandemic and Ukraine would appreciate to be spread to their partner. Most of the attention on NATO's contribution to tackle the current pandemic is focusing on logistic issues and assistance. NATO's science and technology network is also supporting COVID-19 emergency response and each science and technology network has the potential for tackling future crises of this kind. With its pool of defence scientists, engineers and analytics, the largest such network in the world that can play a major role in finding scientific and medical solution to defeat the current pandemic and help prepare for future crises. In this regard, I would like to inform you that the Ukrainian experts would be happy to contribute to this effort. The COVID-19 pandemic should therefore serve as a serious warning that we need to prepare our nations better and make them more resilient to mitigate the effects of future pandemics. It is obvious that NATO, allied and partner nations need to apply the lessons learned, including notions on strategic independence and critical supply chain. Ukraine always will be with partners of NATO and we are ready to help in all situations and our experts are ready to join all the programs that we can help. Thank you.
Now, I see Joelle is requesting the floor again. Joelle, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't want to overdo it. But I would like to react, or maybe hear you react. I said that maybe we could put pressure or encourage Taiwan to come and join the WHO. I would like to hear your reaction to this suggestion. It's important to have this relationship also with Asian countries. And the matter of public health is absolutely important. And we have to be humble as well. We can't just look at what we've succeeded in doing and what we have done within NATO, but we also have to turn to countries, other countries that have succeeded beyond our borders. And I'm thinking about Taiwan. If I have the right information, there is a population of 24 million. And if I'm not mistaken, only five people died. And yet their policies were very different from ours. And I think we could have benefited from that if Taiwan had been part of the WHO.
had been part of the WHO. Taiwan was part of WHO. As an observer, we know they're not an international state, it doesn't benefit from that status, even though it has all of the characteristics of such a country. But China has put pressure on the WHO to cancel that observer status of Taiwan. Now, in the light of the work done as part of this report, I realized that we have a lot to learn from Taiwan and from South Korea, by the way. So this was just a suggestion. A lot of parliamentarians in Europe today are mobilizing to that effect, and maybe NATO members of parliament could also ask for Taiwan to once again integrate the WHO. We know that meetings are coming up at the United Nations, as our colleague from Azerbaijan said. It was just a suggestion, and I could understand if you don't want to accept this suggestion, but there it is. Thank you.
Good, Joelle. Now, is there anybody?
So, I'm just conscious of the time.
Yeah, time is already eight minutes, so.
We, we have one more request from Colonel Bob Stewart from the UK delegation, and maybe we can then close, close the list.
Yes, now we give the floor to our colleague, Bob. Hello, Bob, best regards.
Hello, Osman. I'm quite dark, I'm just gonna put the light on.
Yeah.
I just really wanted to support what Joelle had to say. Taiwan should be, have observer status at the very least in the WHO. The problem is, of course, we know that China will object strongly, and if you put it to the United Nations, China's got one heck of a lot of support in the General Assembly. It uses its economic power very, very well to get people to support it. I personally think it's a real big mistake not to have Taiwan in the WHO. It has produced really effective, very valuable rescue teams in disasters, and that's something that Taiwan has done very well. So I just wanted to support what Joelle has said. I personally cannot speak for my government, I'm speaking personally, but I think it's a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Now, is there anybody? I think we don't, we don't see none. So now we close the meeting. Thank you for, to our reporters for their work, and also thank you to our all members for joining us with this discussion. Thank you to our president, all NATO parliamentary staff, and also the interpreters. They are working very hard, it's not easy, and they are doing this first time, so I congratulate them. Thank you very much for everything. Our general secretary, thank you for your team, for everybody, for the reporters, for their work. Thank you, and best regards from Turkey. Now I close the meeting. Thank you.